Welcome everybody this evening. Public commentary, I don't believe we have any. So we'll move along and go to the consent agenda. Which includes a minutes from the previous meeting appropriations. And lake cabin transfers for A-ten. Oh, excuse me, B-ten, B-eighth, and B-eight. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Okay, the CTS group update.
Yes, we're kind of, like I said, the lighting's done, they're still working on the water meters, they've ordered some. And hopefully the plan is to be done the middle or end of this month. The weather last week didn't help, obviously, we had this storm that kind of shut things down for a while. So their hope is to have it done this month.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about CTS? We're moving right along, okay. North Riverwalk extension, Nick?
Brady Hedstrom with BG Consultants has completed the redesign of the Riverwalk. He has turned that into KDOT. He's also turned it into Bryant and Bryant Construction. We're just waiting to hear back from KDOT and Bryant and Bryant Construction on a start date.
Okay. Any folks, council members have any questions on that?
Did they give an estimate on when things may start?
No, that's what I'm saying, Brady just sent it to them on Friday of last week. I'm still waiting on Doug Lynn with KDOT. To look at everything, and Bryant and Bryant has to look at it, but as soon as they look at it and are okay with it, they'll give us a date. So I'm just waiting to hear back, there's an email chain going with them that, and they're supposed to respond to it and let us know. And Brady's keeping an eye on it and trying to get information of when that's gonna be, so.
The test holes that are being dug to the north of that project, does that have anything to do with that, or is that a whole separate?
No, it has to do with the Riverwalk project. The extension, there's a water line over there, and part of the reason we had to do the redesign, it was assumed by BG Consultants that those were bored. And if they were bored, they'd be really deep, but they weren't bored. They were bored underneath the river, and then they nine-deep up. So Derek had to dig test holes to figure out how, what the depths in those areas were, so they could do the engineering for the dirt work.
Okay.
So that was part of the issue with the original design, is that they didn't take into account some stuff that should have been taken into account. That's the reason we couldn't before with the project at that time.
Okay, well, just to clarify, we've looked at different plans to go a little farther underneath the bridge, that doesn't, that's not part of this.
That's not a part of this. Going underneath the bridge down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was never in any plans I've ever seen. It goes down in that corner and makes a loop, and then goes down to where the old bridge embankment is, where that limestone is?
Yes.
And that's included in this.
That is included in this.
Yes.
It will go down to the old.
Yes, that's the reason we had to locate, because there's a nine-deep on that dike right there. We had to find out, figure out how deep that nine-deep was.
Because that's changed, because one of the original plans was just to have a parking lot there at the corner of where Valley Street is, and then we talked about having this extension going down to the dam, and then from there moving on north. But it does include going down to the dam.
Yeah, so part of that is removing all that riprap and repurposing that somewhere else downwind where we have some voids.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's all included, that's the reason we had to locate that along.
Okay. Wow, I didn't know that, so excellent.
Yeah, me neither, yeah. Good. Good news. Okay, Neighborhood Revitalization Act, or Revitalization Plan, the resolution.
Yeah, so the county, I think everybody's seen the email I sent out, that they, the thing that they changed on, they didn't change the $25,000 evaluation, they changed the five years at 100%. So that was the big change. And this resolution will opt us into being a part of that plan.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
I second it.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
And thank you for all of you who went and met with the county commissioners, I don't know who went, but it was important that this happened, and I hope it was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting.
It was great. Yeah, we had about, there were about 30 people there, 27, 30, yeah, it was very nice.
Great turnout for the community as well.
And the resolution number on that's 03, 02, 21 dash 01.
Okay. Okay, the Streets and Park Recommendation. Appetron meeting. The Streets and Park Committee would recommend the appointment of Dale Everett to maintenance worker at a pay rate of $14.25 an hour. This appointment will be contingent on passing physical, drug, and alcohol screenings. And I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Okay?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero, thank you. And then we have another one. And that is, the Streets and Park Committee Recommendation also.
And this comes about, and some of you may not know this, Brad Martin retired as of March 1st. So that's the reason it's opened up the foreman position and things like that, so.
Okay. And these, I think we can probably do both of these at the same time. Rodney Yow from mechanic to foreman at a pay rate of 18 an hour, and Alan Blosser from maintenance worker to mechanic at a pay rate of 16.50 an hour. These position changes and new pay rates would be effective starting March 3rd, which is tomorrow. And I would accept a motion to approve this appointment, these appointments, I guess I should say.
So moved.
Okay. Was that you, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay. Utilities Recommendation. We've got a bunch of busy people. The Utilities Committee recommends the appointment of Michael Stover to Water Department apprentice at a pay rate of $14 an hour. This appointment will be contingent on him passing a background check, physical, and drug and alcohol screening. And again, I would have accepted a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Can I have one question on that?
Yes, sir.
Seems to me like at every six to nine months, we're hiring somebody else to do the water department. Is it just because of the rate? Are we training people and then they're moving off somewhere else?
The problem is with the water department, it's a little different than Streets and Parks. After a year, you have to get a certification, pass the test in order to keep the job. What happens is, a lot of times, we get to the end of that year, and people decide they don't want to take that test, is what's happened with the last three or four people we've had. Mark's been here for, Mark's been here.
I've been on the Utility Committee for 13 years.
And it's always tough to call people.
And I don't think we've ever had a poll.
It's been, well, yes, we have.
We have since I've been here a couple times.
But it's not for very long there.
But I'm just saying, long, yeah.
I would agree with Nick on this, a lot has to do with the, what they're expected to do. It's a completely different animal than the Street Department. And Councilman Burner and I have had discussions that we feel like the pay may not be where it needs to be for these positions. So that's something that may need to be looked upon in the future to try to make it more attractive. I mean, I don't want to belittle the other departments, because they're just as important.
Right.
But there's a lot of training that goes into the water and sewer. And that's, yeah, that's another point. It's not only water, but then they have to have certification in sewer too, so.
And they get pay bumps for getting their certification. You pay for the certification, and they get bumps in pay as they get the certifications.
So are they getting to the end of that year and they're just not able to take the test?
A lot of them just choose.
Or they just don't want to do it?
Well, I don't know, they quit, so.
Sometimes it's money. I know in the past, we've had people that have went on to higher paying positions, which will happen in a lot of, in a lot of.
A couple of them that left, it was for Fort Riley, and you know, Fort Riley chart pays 25 bucks an hour, which we can't compete with. So it's tough, I mean, we raised it from where it used to be, our starting pay used to be like, what was it, 12.61 an hour? You know, and we bumped it to 14. And then, you know, the incentives for passing your certifications and things like that.
But you have to work a year for you're eligible to take the first certification. So there's no raise options for that personnel, not unless they have a college degree, and then they're.
Well, they can get, they can get their backlog prevention certification in the first year.
Right.
So get a bump that way. But we don't give raises in the first year of a new employee, because you have to have a year of evaluation in order to give them a merit raise. So nobody that's new, been here less than a year, will get a raise based off of merits.
I think we've done a good job under Nick, getting all our wages adjusted. But I still think we might still be a little short on that department. I don't know what Councilman Burner's thoughts are on it.
Yeah, I agree, we talked about it.
Yeah. It's just a real important department, and we just never seem to have it, we never keep our, you know, we've had to, you know, subcontract out at work, because we don't have the vampire to do it. And then the problem is, is that our supervisor is constantly training somebody, you know? And, you know, he can't devote what he needs to be doing, because he's constantly training somebody. So it is a problem.
Nick, on this subject, you might tell everybody what Derek told us at that last utility meeting, about how much time we save reading meters because of.
Oh yeah, so our new meter reading system, we've got, I think there's less than 100 meters that have to be installed. It's taking anywhere between a week to a week and two to three days to read meters. We've done it in this, I can tell you from, they started reading meters yesterday, and then they're done by noon yesterday, reading the meters.
Half the day.
Yeah, I knew my word holding up.
So it took them half a day, by, they came in at 8:30, and by around noon, they were done.
And tell them how long it used to take them.
I just did a week to a week and three days, yeah. So about eight days, five to eight days to read them. And that was somebody walking and doing it, now we just drive to a location, hit the button on the computer, and it loads up, uploads to the computer, you move to the next location, hit the button, uploads, and so on.
See, originally, we thought we were gonna have to go to several locations, and it's reading a much broader area than what it is.
Well, we have good. And that helps with time and projects and things like that, because we don't have to dedicate a guy or two to go out and do first reading, and then go back out and do rereads and things like that, so. The system's pretty cool, because it'll tell you if there's huge bearings between the bill from last month to this month, which would indicate a water leak and things like that, or if there's an issue with it not reading correctly, you'll throw up an error for that meter, to let you know that you need to go check on that meter or whatever, so. It cuts a lot of the guesswork out of reading meters, and the time commitment that was committed, we've committed to that, so.
I'm sorry, I distracted you from the vote.
That's okay, we need to vote, but I was gonna say, we're fortunate, we have good connectivity too, I think that that helps a lot, that. Okay, all those in favor? Both, do you remember what you voted for?
I never think so.
Okay. Now we are on to governing body comments. Bill?
Nothing, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Nick?
I'm sorry. So, and we sent this to Marcus, or we can write it out now, but these will be in the paper. We have a water leak over on Eighth and Donin. And it's gonna close down the water to the grade school, and we communicated with the grade school, the people that live in that neighborhood. We had, and Derek told me today, two or three residents we couldn't get in contact with, they had placed door hangers on their doors. And then we're gonna put it in the paper, but that water will turn off water to the grade school, quality profile on several houses on Seventh and Eighth Street and on Donin. Then it shuts off 26 miles of rural water.
Wow.
So they're doing it Friday afternoon, we've coordinated with everybody to make sure everybody's aware, so it's not a big surprise. But that project's gonna take place starting Friday morning, and they hope to have it done by 5 o'clock that day. The water will be turned off sometime between 12 and 2, is what Derek estimated.
And so the rural people know it too?
Yes, we've, yeah, we've talked to Rural Water, and they've alerted their customers out in the Rural Water District that the water will be off at some point on Friday.
And they're also installing a valve.
Yeah, so we have an issue over there where we don't have a valve that we can isolate that main. So when Derek digs it up to fix it, he's gonna put a valve in there so we can isolate it.
And you have to turn off so many people next time?
Right, yep.
If there is a next time, hopefully there won't be.
Yeah, hopefully it fixes it, we don't have that problem.
Okay.
And then, I just want to make sure everybody's on board with applications for KDOT for the Highway 56 resurfacing, are due on Friday, just want to make sure everybody's good with me sending that in, or having Brady submit that for us.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Is there, is the crosswalks gonna be a part of that?
It is, yeah. Yeah, and we'll have to look at it, I talked to Brady about the cost. I think we ended up spending about $146,000 on the 177 project. That was our share of that, plus stuff that wasn't covered. This one's up around 100, and I think it was 165,000. There's a lot more work that needs to be done on that side of town as far as crosswalks and things like that. So it's not as in good a shape as 177 was. So we can look at that and see if we can reduce some of the cost depending on that, but we can look at that and then do change orders as we go.
Might as well put in for the top and.
Yeah, yep. So, no, thank you. If you guys are good with that, I'll have Brady submit that for us, you know, on Friday.
Okay. Do I hear any opposition to that?
No.
Okay, what else do we have?
That's all I got.
That's all you have, okay, Jason?
I don't have anything this week, here.
Okay. Mark? Keith?
I don't have anything either, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Nick, I think we've talked about this in the past, and council's talked about it. Need for some more cameras in the Riverwalk park. And I don't know if you, we talked about it a long time ago, have you moved on that at all?
We haven't, because when we originally talked about that, part of that was, they were gonna do a bunch of dirt work down on the amphitheater. And we were worried that if we did it just for like John White Pavilion, we're gonna have to add on later to do stuff down the Riverwalk, and just, just the cost of it. That conversation's been a long time ago. Me and Jeff Blosser met with TCT down there to talk about fiber optic cable, and internet, and cameras, and all that stuff.
Well, there's, you know, there's some bad stuff happening down in that area, and I just think it would be important if we could get some cameras down there. There was an incident over the weekend in the Riverwalk that would have been nice to have some cameras there.
What are you talking about? Are you talking about a kid fight, or?
Well, I don't.
Maybe I'm not aware of it, so.
Well, we had a young, young boy airlifted out, and the, you know, I don't know if I can go into all the things, it's probably an ongoing investigation, but, but something happened on the Riverwalk, and there's no, there's no cameras there. And we know there's been some problems down in the playground equipment anyway.
Yep.
And so, and you know, cameras are getting really cheap, you know?
We just gotta figure out where we're gonna mount them, that was the other issue, because you can't really mount them on John White Memorial Pavilion, because it sits so low to the ground.
There's probably some poles around there that you might be able to get them upon.
I'll go down there and look at it again, and then I can get in contact with TCT and see what kind of they recommend. It's just a problem of trying to find somewhere to put that stuff, where it can't be messed with.
Usually messed with.
Yeah, so ideally, you would be able to put one on the outside of John White Memorial Pavilion to take a look out, but since the way it's set, somebody could reach up there and just rip the king off, or destroy it.
Well, my neighbor reached out to me and said that she has a video of a boy named Lorenzo beating up two other little boys at the Riverwalk. I don't know how extensive it is, but I'm supposed to get it tonight, so.
I would just, I would direct that to Sean, that's not in my wheelhouse, I'll let Sean, I'll refer to Sean on that stuff.
Happened at the Riverwalk, I don't know where.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure. News to me, if somebody didn't report to the police or the sheriff's department, they probably should have done that.
And we talked about putting one underneath the bridge, you know, that, as the trail goes underneath the bridge, to, quite a while back.
Yeah, that was never been a part of my discussion, so.
Anyway, I just think we ought to look into doing that.
Yeah, I think it's on my radar, you know, we've looked at the Riverwalk and the stuff at the amphitheater, and we're trying to figure out if we can mesh everything together to get the most bang for the buck.
Sure. And the last thing, I'm encouraged by the conversation we had earlier with the chamber. I think it's a good starting point for us to work off of, and it can be nothing but positive, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Larry?
The city has a committee, don't we, for the fire department, or?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Okay, the only thought was, I've been using North of the Fire Station to walk my dog the last year over there, and police after him, of course. But the mobile module trailer that parked over there?
The Morse County one?
Yes. It appeared to me that the tires may be flat on it, and.
They don't do anything with, when Scott was there, we, I know Sean, and I know I talked to him about it, because if you're not gonna use it, take it out to the county instead of setting it on the fire department. But that may have changed, I haven't talked to Jay about it, and I imagine I can have Sean do that. I imagine, he probably, he may not even know they own it, because it's been back behind there for, since I got here it's been there. I've been here since I started my fourth year, so it's been sitting and having to move since I've been here. So I can have Sean talk to Jay about it.
I just worried that if we had a need for it, we're not gonna have any pre-warning.
Right, well, I agree with that.
And if you go and get it, and the tires are all flat on it.
Yeah, so I'll have Sean talk to Jay about it.
Yeah, that's the only comment I have tonight.
Okay. Sharon?
Well, I have a contract here that I'd like to present for the city council's approval. The Riverwalk Committee, as you know, we had the design for the amphitheater seating done and paid for, and that's in the process. But the next steps are the buildings that occur down there. The building that holds the restroom and the entrance at the top of the amphitheater, the shelter that happens on, over the stage area. With this first round with the seating, and it's, a part of that is also the stage platform, but it's not the cover for it. And also the pavilion, and then the landscaping for the patio area. That's the, that's the next step. But in order to begin work on trying to raise funds for that, we needed actual drawings. And so we went back to and talked to several architects, had some come and talk to the Riverwalk Committee, and settled on a gentleman by the name of Ken Zimmerman, who is from Kansas City now, but he's a local guy. We got bids from two other architects too. His was half the price. Part of it was because he wants to help us out, because he's from this community, and he wants to help us with, with moving ahead there. So what I have here is a contract from him. This contract is for $44,000, and it is, it's, what it includes is the actual construction designs for those buildings that I just described to you. And just as a side, the other bids were twice that much. So we know we're getting a lot of help from him. The bid, or the contract is actually from Spears and Lamb, which is an architectural firm that he works through. And so there's, there's still a lot of expenses, but it's, but we're getting a lot of his actual work for free there. So, what happens is, the Riverwalk Committee wants to bring this to the council and ask for the council's approval to sign this contract. As far as the money, we have this money in hand. We have money in hand to finish the seating, and it's beginning on this, to pay for these contract designs. We still need to raise a lot more money. It's $400,000 to build the restroom, the building at the top, so we're still looking for grants for that, but it's a step at a time. So, you have questions? I don't want to go on too.
I think that Jeff told me that he, we needed to get this contract signed so that we could go forward with the design to, able to, for him to come and work with Nick, and then ask to get bids, start getting bids for the concrete.
Get bids for the concrete for the extension.
He's done the design there, that's what he built us for.
Okay.
That was, he sent the bill, and that, because originally, we didn't have a contract, and I wanted to have a contract of what we're paying for. So that's the reason we have the contract in the invoice for the work you already done, so he's already done the design.
It's not told, but that's the first.
Yeah, the design started with concrete work and stuff that Jeff was, you're talking about with Jeff.
Because Jeff will be ready for that pretty quickly, you know? So we could actually approve that, and then it wouldn't hurt for us to go ahead and approve for Jeff and Nick to start getting bids for concrete, so that they are.
You guys have already done that.
I thought, I didn't think we had done that yet.
Yeah, you guys have allowed that, we were just waiting on Jeff. Jeff was waiting to get that, the design, in order to do the quantities for the concrete work. That's what we were waiting on, so yeah, you guys did approve that, it's been a while back.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, you guys have approved that.
Okay. So do I hear any questions on the contract from Spears and Lamb? Okay, but I, anybody would like to make a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Been moved in seconded to approve contract with Spears and Lamb for construction design for $44,000 to be paid for through the Riverwalk Committee funds.
Yep.
Is that infrastructure, or is that?
It's, it's on separate.
It's on separate, okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Opposed, okay, motion carries six zero. And I might say that we generally do not vote on that large amount of money in this, at this time in governing body comments, but we've all talked about it, it's been brought up many times, so. Yeah, so, and we are saving a lot of money to do that, so. Okay, anything else, Sharon?
No, that's all. I'm hearing, I'm asking, have they met yet, the committee that talks about the COVID and the controls, the rules for the county and so on, are they meeting?
Yeah, we meet every other Wednesday.
Okay, so you'll meet tomorrow, maybe, huh?
That's the plan, yeah, I think we'll meet tomorrow.
I just wondered where, where are the?
Well, it's kind of plateaued, I think the last one they put out, I think there were seven new cases, I think. So it's done quite a bit. And they've removed the restrictions on the number of people that can meet from 10 to 50.
To 50.
Yep.
So we're at level two on vaccination, which is close contact people, people that are in close contact, so they're going through the businesses, they've gone through the county.
And then I'll talk to you guys afterwards about the ones that you said that you want to get your shot. I have dates and times for you guys.
Schedules, okay.
And I just need to know when you want to do it, so I can let them know.
And I think the 65 and over are also included in that, so, anyway, okay.
Well, it's exciting to, we're maybe coming out of it a little bit, so that's, that's great. Thanks for the information, bye, sir.
Okay, and I have a couple of things. First of all, we would like to set a blighted meeting. We were on a track, a schedule, to, you know, we tried to keep three to four residences at a time on the blight to the businesses, or not businesses, mostly.
Residential.
Residential, some businesses, but mostly that are around the community. And we've kind of let that slide here with COVID and all that. But it would be, I think we need to have a blighted committee meeting, so.
Yeah, and I can get with James, see when he.
Okay, that'd be good.
Work for him, and then I can communicate with the blighted structures.
Do we even know who's on it?
I have a.
Me, Jason, and I are.
Okay.
Yeah, I know who's on it, yeah, Jason and Larry are the ones that I'm seeing.
Okay.
My, Chris, and Thomas, who was on it again.
Okay.
Chris, and Jason, you got a point there.
Chris, Ruby, so you're still on.
Me and Jeff just be four.
Were you and Jeff? You gotta be appointed though, to the Lake Construction Committee, that's why.
Probably did, yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, so it's Jason and my room now, so.
And one time, I thought we had a roll for that whole, so maybe not.
Not, uh.
Just the light, light committee got it.
Yeah, light, light.
That's where I am.
Okay, so you're gonna talk.
So I'm gonna get with James, and I'll get a time, date, that works, and I'll email you guys that, and try to get that.
That's what I asked you.
So hopefully we'll be here within the next week or so, we need to all take care of this out, and James, some time to get some stuff put together.
Okay. I have, I had a contract for the amphitheater, so we've got that up here, we've already done that, thank you. We have been asked several times by the people who are doing the symphony in the Flint Hills that will be here this year. And in the past, we have spruced up Main Street, done some different things. And we're at, we've been asked if we are going to do that, and if we can help do that through Pride and through the city. There are, we had talked a little bit about the benches and the planters, the planters downtown are getting really, really bad, they're splitting and they're losing the water. So I, I think we'll maybe start by talking to Pride about this, if that's okay with everybody, and then we may end up having. everybody, and then we may end up having to come back in to city council to do something if we need to do something. We've talked also about perhaps where the parking lot, where those fences are back the, what are those, the wood fences that?
Split row.
Yes, split row.
And if you guys have been down, Mark's in it today, so down there at Crim Park, along where the car wash is and then the diesel mechanic shop. This winter, that got snow pushed over, not the fence over. We went and priced replacement of the fence and it was really expensive. We had a bunch of limestone rocks that weren't going to work for seating at the amphitheater and we sent them back, we're going to have to pay to send them back. So what we did is I had them pull the fence and we took those limestone rocks and lined where the fence used to be and it actually looks a lot better.
Does look good.
Nice.
And I think I brought that up to you guys before, I would really like to get rid of this split row fence because a post, just a post is forty bucks right now. And then a cross beam is anywhere between thirty and thirty-five bucks.
Well, I'm back there behind tiptoes and the rerun and all that, people run into them all the time, they're a mess, you know, like their cars run into them and stuff, so we were, had talked about that, the people in Pride had talked about that, that using those would keep people from running their cars into those big, big stones. So anyway, I just wanted you to know, anybody's got some suggestions or anything? We've got several pictures of suggestions.
Yeah, and there's some neat things you can do with it. You can have a board out and use it as pots for planting stuff in, there are all kinds of cool things you can do with limestone.
Which is what we've talked about in Pride, exactly do that, so that it blends with the amphitheater, so we have a look, you know?
Plus it'll clean up that strip down through there where it just comes as a mess right through there, so.
Yeah, just grows weeds and stuff. The east side, we had talked about maybe putting a few benches and stuff starting there, even though we don't want to do the full streetscape until next year when we're getting ready to do the, the repairs and stuff to the road, so. Anyway, I just want to bring that up. I do not know if the camera that is on the Riverwalk Bridge, does that belong to?
That's TCT's.
No, TCT does not own that.
They moved, they moved it.
They did the work on it, they don't own it.
I think the Chamber has something to do with it.
That's not a city thing. So there's a, when we tore the Girl Scout cabin down...
Nobody wants it.
They were looking for a place to put that camera and they were talking to the school district, the last I knew, about moving that camera to somewhere. The city doesn't own the camera. My understanding was TCT's camera, would they use for?
They were using it to monitor the Riverwalk, Chief Stone was involved with some of that kind of, you remember?
But I don't think, I don't, it wasn't TCT's.
It panned so slow, you couldn't, you couldn't...
It wouldn't work.
No, you couldn't get any useful information out of it.
Plus the vibration on the bridge kept turning, messing it up, it definitely went out.
Maybe I'm thinking of a different one because there's another camera that was about down there that TCT owned.
This was about wagon, yeah, up there on the light pole.
Yeah, what we had talked about, well, what we had talked about is would the city have any problem if that were, if, and Aaron, this will be you, I guess, you might take this back to your group, but we had talked about possibly mounting that on top of the high school and having it look down that trail, you know, the trail bridge there and everything? If the city has no problem with it looking over that trail bridge and using it, possibly talking to like WIBW as a weather camera, you know, that, so they'd say, you know, this is how it looks at Council Road, like they do, you know, looking from Manhattan or from the Topeka or whatever. Would the city have any problem with that camera going down that bridge walk? That's kind of a, to me, it would be kind of a security thing almost because even though it pans slowly, that is kind of a quiet walk.
I'll have to look at my notes because I swear that TCT had a camera, that's what it was for, was to show the weather downtown and, you know, the...
It isn't. I'm just telling you, I was in on that and Dave Baker suggested that the city bought it and, and I don't know that the city bought it or that he got it.